Good evening, everyone, and welcome to another meeting of the Inglewood City Council. Today is Monday, November 21st, 2022, and the time is seven for, I'm sorry, 7:20 PM. Before we get started, I'd like to have a moment of silence for the passing of Geraldine Calhoun, always known as Lady Ragweed, Camper Granny, and I just found out Pistol and my granny, Granny Calhoun. So a moment of silence, and then if we could, please Reverend Williams, give us a prayer, please. Thank you.
That is great. Father God, we come no other way but be in your everlasting love. Thank you for this meeting on this Monday, November 21st. God, guide us and lead us, bind us together with love, unity, strength, and we produce a city of love. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. All rise for pledges allegiance. Our pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Chisholm. Councilmember Watley.
Present.
Councilmember Washington.
Present.
Councilmember Williams. Mayor Protim Allen.
Here.
And for the record, Mayor Wimberly.
Here.
So you have six, six present.
All right, and Councilman Chisholm said that he possibly may be running behind, just for the record. All right, moving right along, approval of the agenda?
Some move.
With additions?
With additions, yeah.
Item F and G.
And I need to.
All right, thank you. Mayor Protim is there. Second?
Second.
Probably second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it, motion carries. Moving right along to presentations. The Chair does recognize former councilmember from District Number Six, Councilwoman Connie Mitchell in the audience. How are you, ma'am? All right, good, then the Chair would just like to recognize you. If you had anything for us, you can say it at this time. No, ma'am. All right, then, moving right along. Just wanted to recognize you. All right, you're welcome, ma'am. All right, consent agenda?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Yes.
All right, ayes have it, motion carries. All right, getting into new business. Item A, please.
Consider approval to amend the fiscal year 2022 to 2023 budget.
All right, what's your pleasure?
Some move, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
All right, any discussion?
You need some line?
Yeah, for sure, please. Just for the public in general, I know we went over to orientation session, that's why we're here at six.
Yep. There are a couple of amendments, one coming out of Jerome's Department.
Well, let's say that Department of Public Works.
Department, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Department of Public Works.
Mm-hmm.
So, and that's the roads, local roads, major street roads. There's an amendment for the court, they just, they didn't get a person that they thought they were gonna get, so we had fringe benefits budgeted for that person, but we don't need fringe benefits because we don't have the person. So they just wanna take that $6,000 and put it into overtime. For the Parks and Rec, we made $118,000 last year. We didn't put it in the budget because the books were not closed by the time we got the budget done. So once we closed the books in September, we got confirmation that we in fact did make $118,000. So we would like to use that money to do capital improvements for the books. But we only asked for 85 of it right now.
Mr. Chair?
Mayor Protim?
I'm looking at the sheet that you gave me, and it was very hard for me to understand it. I know we'd had budget amendments before, but can you just give us the budget amendments that we are either increase or decrease? It was hard for me to read this because I didn't know what was going on. How much did Parks and Recs get in?
How much did they get in?
Yeah, because I'm not, I'm, when I-
I have a report right here that I could pass to you, but I also emailed it to you and highlighted the $118,000 right here.
Is that the monthly report that you give us?
Yeah, Jeff, this is the report.
Okay, now, well, okay.
This was for the amendments.
This is for the amendments, I mean.
This is last year's budget, which shows the $118,000 surplus.
Okay. What I think I'm asking, Mayor, is we had budget amendments prior, and we had them listed, and the dollar amount, but we didn't have everything else, so we know which more-
You just want a one sheet, like you're saying this?
It's what we got in.
This number?
Yeah, because it's kinda hard to read this because it's just numbers everywhere, and it's not telling me why. We used to get tick marks to tell us what was the increase for. They gave it to us. This is not saying anything to me.
Okay, it just has the numbers in it as it relates to what we, what we had and then what we're proposing to spend?
I don't know.
What else did you wanna add to that?
I mean, I mean, do you understand what I'm saying, Shaw?
One of the things that we did in 2021, we had the general fund, we had the drug enforcement, what the proposed revenues were, what the proposed amendment and expenditures were. So it was pretty, pretty kinda straightforward. We did this last year, so you may be wanting to look at something like that last year, what we did, so that you can see actually what the amendment would be, what the overage was, what the decrease was, what we had in those two funds. So you got a dollar amount, what the decrease was, and then what, what the amended fund would be. So it kinda give you a simple-
Councilman Shaw, that's why I called you.
Yeah, I mean, that's-
Asked you that question because I knew that this question would come up.
Yeah, that's what I was saying to you.
Because you both have been on council before with me as well, and I don't have no problem with the document at all. So that's why I asked you earlier, and you said you didn't have a problem with what we were presenting.
I don't, I don't, but that's why I-
So as it relates to what the councilwoman, Mayor Protim, is asking, is it something that we can actually add on to it? Is that what you, is that what you're suggesting right now?
We could. Now, that's why I said to you earlier that she may have, you know, may not understand exactly what, what you see.
Okay.
So I understood it.
Okay.
But I knew that she probably would have some difficulties in seeing it.
Okay.
So here, what I found today.
Okay.
Is something that we did in the past or just here in this council, 2021.
Okay.
So it can be a little bit maybe more simpler.
Gotcha.
You see, so that's why I wanted to share with you tonight.
Yes.
Because I just found it.
Okay.
Share with you so that you can be able to see it a little bit more simpler, because I'm, I kinda figured that she probably would not understand exactly.
It's not that I don't understand it.
I'm not saying that she didn't understand it, but it was, you know, some things to say.
But I need to know, we getting revenue in.
Yep.
What is it for?
Yeah, so this was, this is part of the bu, the budget, so this was actually, as it relates to, so you got three items that's happening, okay? The one with the water fund would actually is four, because you had a water fund and a road fund that because of inflation, Mr. Bivens has asked for, of course, the number that we, we budgeted for, that monies has went up a little bit. So he's here tonight, he can explain exactly what happened as it relates to that, right? But it does show, it does show that here pretty clear.
Okay, but we normally, we normally get, I mean, I know different people do different things, but we normally get tick marks.
When you say tick marks, I've, I've been listening to council, been around here for it.
Where the money is coming from and, and what, you know, what happened. But on here, it's, it's in the form of a budget form.
Yep.
And, okay, like, 3 million, where is that, where is that?
Okay, I get what you're saying, so you just, we just need a little bit more clarification.
And I send, and I find one and send it to you when we have budget amendments, because it's self-explanatory, and then at the, and at the next page, it gives us the tick marks.
Okay, all right, then. Do you understand what they're asking for? Okay, is that something that we can provide into that format? Okay, as it relates to what we're asking for to do tonight, can you break it down a little bit more so everybody will be on the same page?
I mean, I can break down the Parks and Rec, I can break down the court, Mr. Bivens can break down the rest.
Yep, okay. Mr. Biv, step on up here unless you wanna come on up with, you looking around right now, what's going on?
So aren't here, where's the courts?
So we're all on the same page, it's that, 6,000 that's in there.
Right here.
The head of council to this body.
Do you want to come here and see us?
I thought you guys were gonna do this while I was on vacation, so I had prepped my deputy to do this.
Oh, okay, you wanna put her on the spot, bring her up here?
After this, you wanna come forward, because I didn't wanna steal her thunder.
Okay, well, come on, let her come, you gotta prep her.
She gonna steal you, she gonna, she gonna steal.
Hey, she's training under me, so gotta, gotta put the feet to the floor.
That's right, okay.
So I'm here for your questions, where you wanna start?
So as it relates to just the monies that we're, where you're talking about, you started with a certain number.
Okay, you wanna start the road fund first?
Yes, go ahead.
So in the road fund, I've stated this on several occasions, about Avondale, the budget came in 20% higher than we, 28% higher than we anticipated, therefore, we ran a deficit in the major fund. So that's why you see the $3 million negative, because we ran a deficit. So therefore, we will be getting with the treasure and Plan Moran to do a deficit elimination plan for the major road fund. We will not be doing any major road funds for the next two and a half years, project-wise, because of this deficit.
But we are actively-
Yeah, we are actively seeking money.
There you are.
We are. We always actively seeking money. I just turned it to a report to the mayor's office today, they will be coming forth in the calendar, where you will see how much money we've gotten over the past year.
But it was nothing that the, the administration did or this body did as it relates to the budget, it was inflation. Is that?
Inflation, correct.
So we're all on the same page with that?
Same page, on materials and labor.
So the 3 million is gonna be, as we prepare for doing roads for next year, unfortunately, we'll have to draw back because of inflation and say we can't do Phase Two of Avondale.
Of Avondale until 2025, Carrie?
Oh, boy.
26.
Exactly.
2026.
So that's not-
But let me say the one good thing, we are putting the water main in for Phase Two, as you would begin to see that start, as you seen the barrels over there. So we will actually be putting that in, we just won't be able to do the road work.
And it's not because, again, anything that the administration did or because the budget just ran over, because we were overspending, it's because of what's happening in the world of America as it relates to inflation. So we wanna make sure that that's clear. All right, so that's that one. So what's the other one that you have?
And then the water fund, those are projects that we are carrying over from 2022 into 2023, and you have a list of them, or you should have a list of them in your council package, that we were asking to amend to this budget that were not put in the budget, in the previous budget.
And now, where's that monies coming from?
From the water fund.
Water fund.
Is that listed in the packet?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we'll make sure-
The local road is sidewalks, we're doing the sidewalks, we did get 100, I mean, $750,000 grant. When I put it off a bid, it came in over a million, almost a million, too. What we are asking for, I think it was 600-some-thousand dollars for sidewalk from major and local to offset that. So what we, what we asking for is, like the mayor said, it's inflation, and it's driving prices up, so I have to go back and amend my budget to meet the inflationary costs. And when I do that, like I said, we will be doing a debt elimination plan, I had already spoken with Heidi and the treasurer, so we on board sometime next year, but for the end of this fiscal year, we'll look at where the budget actually ends up at in 2023. And then we'll do a class. So like the mayor says, I understand the oohs and the ahs because I wanted to finish Avondale by 2025.
Absolutely.
And it won't happen.
Okay.
We are going to the state to ask for, you know, of course-
We are going to the state to ask for more money.
Yes.
And we did, we did receive some good news from the state that I wanna share with you tonight, too, that the mayor asked me to share. Phase Two of the bond that we requested the 20 million, it's all been forgiven 100% by the state, so it turns into a grant. So that's roughly 9 million and some change.
The taxpayers.
Which is myself.
Should be getting some oohs and ahs off of that one. I mean, that's what oohs and ahs, I mean, we were talking, that's all.
Won't be on the tax roll.
Yeah.
Money.
Yeah.
And then I submitted.
Say, well, say it again, so she can hear that.
We got, we asked for 9 million in Phase Two of SRF, the state revolving loan.
There you go with them initials, I mean.
The state revolving loan, which means we would have to pay it back because it was part of the bond.
Okay.
The state turned around and said, okay, we gonna take all that money and turn it into a grant, 100%, which means we don't have to pay it back. It's free money.
All right.
And before I left on my vacation, I applied for five more grants, and we're trying to make sure that we can get those at 100% so they can turn it into free money, too. So my team, myself, and Troy, and Carrie, and this, I'll put this, my name is there. That's all we do all day, is we, we looking for money.
9 million's a good start.
We looking for money.
I like that.
We looking for money, and we looking for ways that we don't have to pay it back.
Right, that's good.
And we are constant communication with Eagle and the state of Michigan, thanks to our mayor. He has put me in the right place and the right position with the right people.
Okay, all right, man. All right, paid him to say that, y'all. All right, but no, good job, man. I know you're always busy with that, you know, and it's serious, though, right now, we know there's a lot of money circulating out there, and you know, what, what has happened, and then thank God as it relates to, you know, the Democrats being in control of the state, working with our wonderful Governor Gretchen Whitmer, they've really committed to work with the city of Inglewood. So, you know, we're-
And that's true.
We're really excited about it, we just have to do our part. So, and we're doing that. So continue to work, man, it's good, good work. All right, so those were those, true. And then explain the rec stuff again, and then make sure, Mayor Protim, please, I don't like getting to these meetings and not knowing, so help me. You just tell me to tell him, or you tell him how you wanna see that, because we wanna make sure that it's done that way. That way, we don't have confusion going on, because we wanna make sure we're all on the same page with this type of stuff, you know? And it's easy to do, because Durla listen sometimes. CPA, go ahead. But why you not asking for the, and this is, that, this is what I wanted to know. I mean, I've been waiting for this question to come out from this body, but again, this is the taxpayers' money that we all agreed to pay for the rec center. So you had a rec in the library that actually have millages that we say, okay, the city can't stand to pay for them on the general fund in order to keep them open and operating. We're, you know, taking a portion of our taxes that wouldn't necessarily go to the general fund to go to run these particular entities. Why wouldn't we take the whole 118 and put it back into the rec center and into our parks? I know you talk, I know you talk about surplus and all that, but go ahead, I'm listening.
Well, I mean, that's what we're doing, we're putting the 118 back in. But again, as an accountant, I know that the books, just because the fiscal year ends.
Yep.
Doesn't mean we're done reconciling.
Yeah, for sure.
So once the accounting firm was done reconciling, which was September, right? By that time, the budget was already approved.
Yep.
They reconciled, and they confirmed that we in fact did make 118. So now I'm comfortable asking to spend the money, because I know for sure.
But not the whole 118, you only asked to spend 85.
Yeah, I'm only asking to spend 85 right now.
Oh, so you're trying to say you're gonna come back and ask us to spend some more?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, why?
They talk to me like I'm a five-year-old, I'm okay with that.
Oh, goddamn.
Break it down, kindergarten style, I understand. Okay, so you gonna come back, because that's what I'm saying, you know, again, as we're collecting this money, and that's what has happened. And understand this, the wonderful thing that we've done recently, and we're gonna be sharing this with the whole community, is that we approved our Parks and Rec plan. So with the leadership of the Parks and Rec Commission, working with McKenna, and then all of the people that actually did the survey, they actually set out a beautiful Parks and Rec plan, and with that, you have capital outlay stuff. So each year, we should have capital improvement stuff going on as we're making money. So that money shouldn't just be sitting somewhere, because really, if it's just sitting somewhere, we could use it to pay for a police officer or something like that.
It's not really just sitting, because it is, just like what came up with the air.
Uh-huh.
Have you had money sitting there?
I get it, yeah.
In your fund, then you can go ahead and write that check and get that air fixed.
Yeah, I get it.
So there's nothing wrong with saving money.
Nah, you right. I mean, you are the treasurer, I, I, you're right.
So you saying the money was specifically for, for Parks and Recs, right?
Correct.
Okay, so that's what we have to use to full 100-and-seven-thousand dollars in?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, okay.
For sure, you can't use that money for anything else.
Okay, okay.
And Mr. Chair, he, he also, as he sends out the monthly reports, you could actually see the revenues going up. He had started out with 34,000, and it begins to start increasing. So as he sends those reports out, you can see it.
Yep.
See what we're trying to do. So I applaud our treasurer, for actually doing the things-
He's doing a pretty good job.
And what he's doing. He know I'll come into the office and watch a couple cowboy movies with him.
Okay, so those are the amendments that we're asking for, and then Mayor Protim, what we did discuss before you, before you came in as it relates to just the budget overall, and I apologize, Councilman Shaw, I was trying to step on you. As we were talking about the budget overall, we've been really watching that finite, that's why we've been sending you those reports, as you can see, like in the line items, and as money is moving, it 'll turn red, or turn green, or turn yellow, in those lined items. And then the administration is going to, of course, the department heads are saying, well, I mean, the department administration, but me and the treasurer's going to the department heads and saying, what are you using this for? Or why is this ticking, ticking over a little bit? You need to bring this back down. So we've been really, really watching that, because we know that, you know, the budget is what it is, and it's pretty tight, you know, overall. So overspending is, is something that we're not trying to make happen. So when you see overspending, then of course, we definitely gonna bring it to this body at the same time, as Durla's sending out the check register, and he's sending out other things like that for you guys to be able to answer those questions.
Okay.
We're trying to make sure that we give you all that information, so you will be versed on that. So if you can just let us know again how you would want it in that format, I'm cool with that, because it sound like it'd be good for everybody, okay? All right, then. Anything else? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it, motion carries. All right, item B, please.
Consider approval for the administration to support the state high water infrastructure grant, application for the basis of design study of the Carlisle pump station, Phase Three of the CSO elimination project, expected to cost $40,000 with an $8,000 match from the water and sewer.
All right, what's your pleasure?
Some move.
Seconds, they're saying, okay, any discussion? For the sake of the general public, please, Mr. Bivens, quickly, tell us exactly what's happening, just for the sake of the general public, please. Thank you.
Good evening again. So what I'm asking for in this council request is that if we ran it to a grant that we could get $40,000 for, to do the study for the Carlisle pump station, because it does have to be optimized in the eastern outfalls, it will be expanding, it will be bigger, it'll take more capacity of water. So it's in Phase Three, we saw an opportunity, we could get the money early and start the design work now, and it only cost me $8,000 to match the funds of 40,000. So we waiting for it, and I just need a resolution. You guys adopt this resolution so I can submit it. It's due when, Carrie? It's due November 30th. That's why I told you, Jim, so I just like to submit it.
Any questions for Mr. Bivens? Comments hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bivens.
And too, I would be remiss, turn around. Carrie, if you stand up, Carrie's my engineer from Benish, she's assigned to me, she comes to my office every Wednesday, she's training my, and she works with me on what you see coming before you, and seeking to find money for the city.
Yeah, she does a really good job, thank you, Carrie. Carrie is definitely important, for sure. Thank you for that recognition. All right, then, item C, please.
Consider approval of a special land use permit for a religious institution in the B2 Thoroughfare Mixed Use District at 646 Inglewood Road.
What's your pleasure? Your motion?
Some move, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Seconded, um-
For discussion, Councilwoman Washington?
Yeah, for discussion.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
So with the clerk actually into, reading the request for a council, we're still marking out the project for improvement tasks with the marijuana business model, correct?
Yeah, we'll limit that, related that during orientation, that doesn't even exist.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
So a seconded.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Councilman Williams.
Let me, let me say this. First of all, that, that, that property that there is already taxable property for the city, okay? Number one, to, to talk about making the tax exempt, put the church in there, and we got plenty of churches, a lot of them are empty now, okay? And the thing about it is, to take that property and take it, put it on the tax exempt road would not be beneficiary to this city. Okay, so I, I feel that, number one, that, that, that's, that's a property that brings in tax dollars into this city, and go there and take them off the tax, we're not in that type of business. We need all the tax dollars that we possibly can get, okay? We got enough, we got enough nonprofit, and take my nonprofit, you can take it, okay? We got enough nonprofit in this city, okay? Losing a lot of money, okay? You can sit here and talk about putting another religious institution in here and, and put a tax-free dollar. I just can't buy it, so, I just up the, but I can't, I can't buy that.
Anyone else? Jane, did you wanna speak on this?
I would like to, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, please, go ahead.
I would just like to introduce the project. As was stated, this is at 646 Inglewood Road, the former Marcel Salon, and this special land use application has been evaluated on both the additional use standards for religious institutions and the eight special land use standards that every special land use has to go through. I do wanna remind this body that a religious use is a protected use by the US federal government. So the Supreme Court has ruled that taxable value is not something that is permissible in deciding whether or not a land use can exist within the city. Additionally, this special land use would be conditioned on variances being granted. This special land use does not meet the lot size dimensional requirement, and there's also a separation buffer that they would be seeking a variance for. The applicant is here tonight to answer any further questions. The variance hearing is scheduled for December 1st, but again, that, this special land use would be conditioned on whatever the zoning board of appeals comes to find.
Go ahead, Councilman Williams.
First of all, I mean, what the federal government allows, okay, first of all, that's the B3 area, am I correct? I don't wanna be, I wanna be on target, okay? Which is our business zone, okay? And then number two, okay, we already get tax dollars for that, that property, and, and to go there and take it off the tax road and make it exemption, it's, we're just not in that type of business. Okay, now, you wanna take federal law, you show me the federal law saying that this city has a right, that, that any religious institution got the right to come in here, then you know what, I'm going down, I'm going down to the church called Beulah Baptist, you know what I'm talking about? And, and I'm gonna help them file a lawsuit against this city. So when they got ready to build their church right there on the corner of Carlisle and North Line and, and Carlisle, okay, they were denied by previous council.
David?
May-
What are you thinking?
About the limitation that you, of, of the churches that you have on the-
May I?
Go ahead, I'm sorry, Jane.
Go ahead.
I just wanna clarify, there are eight other reasons that you can potentially find that you don't view this as suitable. The Supreme Court, and I'll let David rule on this as well.
What are the eight reasons?
The, all of your special land use standards. So you have your harmony with the master plan, harmony with existing character, improvement to the community, and that's one where you, I can understand that you wanna look at taxable value. You have adequate public services and facility, smoke, fume, glare, noise, vibration, or odor pollution, reduction of economic fatality, excessive or additional cost to public services, and then consistent with the intent of the zoning ordinance. So there's, if you have other concerns, I can understand those as valid. I just wanna make sure that this body is acting in the way that doesn't lead to any further implications, and it has, the Supreme Court has ruled cases where taxable value and taxable property is not a valid reason. So I just wanna highlight those. And then, Mr. Jones, please.
Jane, you articulated the proper uses to object. I understand Reverend Williams' concern, but the Supreme Court has ruled on what you can and cannot object to. You just be opening yourselves up to litigation for ruling or voting or not passing- for ruling or voting or not passing something based on prohibited use of property. Again, the, the thought is when people own property, they have a right to operate within their property with regards to what the law will allow. And there's certain reasons we can vote it up and certain reasons we can vote it down. If you choose to vote it down, I would suggest you pick one of the lawfully permitted reasons.
One of the eight that she just said.
Correct.
Yeah, you're packing.
I, I couldn't get them all rolled out.
You don't have to use them all. You don't have to pick all eight. If there's a reason that you think fits, you know, again, here, here one vote. The council, you know, moves by its, uh, by its resolutions.
That's, that's what it is with the special land use. Those are those permitted eight. Okay.
So, Mr. Chair.
Please, Council.
If, if that, if that can be sent to the council so that the council will be able to know moving forward what those eight items should be.
They've been sent before. They're in the packet.
They're in the packet.
Yeah, I mean, you know, for the, for the.
We could send them separate. Jane, if you could, please, just at a later date. You're not talking suggesting right now, are you? Later date?
So that the, so that Council Williams can be able to.
Just in the packet.
Yeah, I mean.
Yep.
I'm just saying so he can be able to.
Yeah, at a later date. Yeah, send that to them, please. Thank you. Okay. All right, any others? Hearing done. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any nays? Roll call, please, City Clerk.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmembers Chisholm.
Absent.
Councilmember Wally.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
And Councilmember Williams.
If you have one more.
I didn't hear his response.
What did you say? What was your response, sir?
I don't know.
No? Okay.
And Mayor Proton Mauer.
Yes.
So there's, uh, more?
Motion carries. Good then. Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, moving right along. Item B, please.
Item D is to.
Oh, let me say this. This is a caveat. Come back up here. Is the owner here? He said the owner's here. Please come here, sir. Pastor, please. Um, until you're finished with this process, do not use the building for gatherings. Because I noticed that you guys have been, okay? Thank you very much. I appreciate that. All right, moving right along, please.
You say they had been using it?
Yes.
Why wouldn't that say? Never mind.
I just thought about it. All right, let's move on. Go ahead.
Okay. Consider approval for Ivory and Tamika Burks to purchase one vacant parcel located on Isabel between Carlisle and Beach Street for fifteen hundred dollars.
Some move, Mr. Chair.
Second?
Second.
Moving properly second. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Ma'am, please. Councilwoman Wally.
It says on this, uh, request of council action that the city must zero out the taxes. I don't have a page number again, sir. I'm sorry.
Because the city actually owns the property. I mean, it's typically, unless it comes with something from the county, you know, we don't zero out taxes. I mean, we're not able to do that.
Yeah, but it says on.
You know.
You're not able to?
No, unless it's something that comes from the city. So if the city, if it's a city tax, like say pers- for instance, a water bill, you know, it comes along with that, but not actually zeroing out the taxes.
So what does this need to, uh?
Let me just pull that shit. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Shouldn't even be in there.
Mm-hmm. Let's just remove that. Who's, who's this? Is this any, Peggy, is this short? Come on up here, please. Thank you.
Who's the special project director?
Everything now is going through our relatives. So for properties, because with.
So special projects is the relatives?
Well, now, no, not at all.
Well, I mean, well, this is special projects. I was just asking who.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry. So as it relates to a special project director, of course, we don't have one right now because, you know, the situation that we're going through right now. But as it relates to the, the real estate being sold, it all goes through our relatives because of course they're licensed. You know what I mean? Makes sense. Go ahead. With that question, just as it relates to why is that in the action as it relates to all of the, the taxes will be zeroed out? Those in the request for action.
I would have to see that because I know in our.
She has it right here for you. Thank you.
That's, that's never been in, it's never been in our council packages before, so.
Mm-hmm. I can say that I haven't seen that one before. If that's something that's easily removed, I think that's just what it is. Right?
Now, I do.
All right.
I do know that in the past, if there is water or something when it's attached to a property, that the city will zero that out and start the purchaser with a zero balance. And we always, if there's taxes, they are zeroed out before someone takes, uh, the property or the, either the, the structure or the property if there is a tax or delinquent tax. We don't sell that or transfer that over to a new owner or buyer with a past tax amount on that. We don't do that normally, but I haven't seen it worded quite that way. That's not a form that I prepared or a, a form that I had in your package. Mr. Chair.
Yeah, sure, please.
So I thought the water stays with the house. So you tell. Yeah, and this, what we're selling today isn't even a property. It is just vacant land and there is no water or water bill. I'm just saying anytime someone purchases a property, they normally start off with a zero balance. You wouldn't want to buy a property with delinquent taxes on it if you were purchasing, especially from the city. You, so we always made sure that there was no debt going on to a new buyer, but yeah, that particular form I haven't seen, but I'm thinking that's what it's referring to, which we never do that anyway. Everything, when they take on ownership, it start, it's no, no delinquent taxes or anything on anything that the city sells to us.
Yeah. It clears that in the purchase agreement. I mean, let's just, uh, just say it right off. The city actually owns the property, so there ain't no debt. You know, so we try to sell it for what it's worth and its value. Or if it's taxes that's owed on it, like for instance, the last time, um, we were here before this body, we had, um, taxes that were owed on a property that we found out through that list when the assessor did it, that it was like eighteen thousand dollars of taxes that was owed to the county. We had the, the person that was buying it had to cover that, you know? So now, when the next person gets it through a clear title and their deed, it's zeroed out. So that's basically what that's saying. But that's gonna happen through the purchase agreement anyway, after it's listed and they want and clear title. I know that, let's, let's go this way, Councilwoman Washington.
Um, which, what you guys were just speaking about, um, I wanted to see if you could also answer, um, break down this, where it says water department response, um, with the outstanding utilities, but it says water. So I know we just. So is that separate? Is that with these actual, with the actual, uh, people that are buying it, the applicants, or?
So when a person wants to purchase any property from the city, they have to be, um, reviewed by each, uh, person as far as water taxes. We make sure that they owe the city no debt. In order to purchase anything, you cannot have any prior or owe the city any debt. And you say, you sign a waiver stating that you do not owe the city any debt. If there's anything that's due, when they do write up their offer, they have to come in and pay for that before, um, they can go to, come to counseling before the, the offer can be accepted. So I'm not sure exactly what you're looking for, but if that person did have a backwater, they, they normally have to come in and take care of that situation before they can, um, purchase any property from the city.
Right, which, um, we know that. So that's why I was trying to ask, because it says outstanding utilities for June. So that's why I was trying to, I was kind of confused with that. Because it's usually, usually checked for that, so.
Right, right. I, I, once again, I, normally they don't get this far unless that has been taken care of, so we can double check that, but I'm pretty sure that that has been taken care of. I can't say a hundred percent, but normally it does not make it this far if it has not been taken care of.
Councilwoman, is this what you're referring to, the checklist?
What?
Yeah, so as they go through, I mean, they just using this as like creating memos to it. So maybe in, in the building department, they may have said, hey, you know, check with June for water, you know? Um, before they actually got to the relatives. Because every property now, again, as we set the precedent, we can't sell properties to anybody that owe taxes to the city or utilities. So we'll make sure that we check that.
I love this. Trying to ask, because it says outstanding utilities for June, so that's why.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, that's why I was saying that it may have been, again, like.
A mistake or something.
Not a mistake, no. That we use this format, everybody from each department, the building department, the ordinance department, you know? They may have said, okay, yep, you, we got some outstanding utilities on here from June, so let's have June check on that. You know what I mean? And then we check the box. But as it relates to selling the property, we'll make sure, if this body approves us to sell it, we'll make sure it's all done before we sign over the deed. But I'm pretty sure it's been done.
Myself and, uh, Ms. Taylor, if it's approved tonight, we do meet with the person to collect the final payment and we can verify that that has been taken care of.
Councilwoman Wally?
Yeah, do we know how much it's gonna cost to zero out the, uh?
No, it's nothing that's owed on this. Uh, any property that's owned by the city, we don't owe, it's no property. It's no.
There's zero off the taxes. It's not irrelevant at all.
Exactly.
It's another cross-out.
Exactly. Yeah, it shouldn't be. I, this is just a standard I'm assuming. I don't know even how it got into the write-up. Um, yeah, to be honest. I just know that, um, we own the property, so we don't owe ourselves taxes.
It's just something I've not seen before and I want to make sure before I spend any money.
Cutting pace. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Eyes have a motion carries, please. Item D, E, please. Yes, ma'am.
Consider approval for Connie Mitchell to purchase one vacant parcel located on the east side of Yurison Street between Beach and Chestnut Streets for fifteen hundred dollars.
Go move, Mr. Chair.
I second it. All right, moving second it. Any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Eyes have a motion carries, please. Item F, please.
Nine F, consider approval of amendment number one to water service contract between Great Lakes Water Authority and the city of Inster.
Your pleasure.
Some move, Mr. Chair.
Second. Moving properly second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Ma'am.
Um, these were the questions I was asking him before, if he could probably come up here and grace us with his presence once again.
All right.
Yeah, I was just wondering, is this going to massage, that's my new word for the day, any raise in water rates? Uh-huh.
Is it adjustment?
An adjustment. That's a kind way of putting it. Can we, can we put it in a English way, like yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. Do we know what that is yet? Do we have any percentages or anything of this nature?
No, we just began in the process with Gleva now going through FY twenty-three. I mean FY twenty-four budget rates.
Yeah, explain in lay terms now exactly what.
We just begun going through, there are four study sessions that we go through with Gleva. There are eighty-eight communities that draw water from Gleva. We just begun. We just did roll out two. Roll out three is in January and by May, we will know what the FY twenty-four water rates were.
What's the rate?
We just went through eighty-five contracts, wage reopeners.
But we, we just had one here in the city, think.
We just went through it because we entered into a contract within the twenty-eighteen. So as part of the contract, it says every four years, it can be visited contract to see how much actual water that we're using. But we have used, we're using more water than we did in twenty-eighteen. But you have more people at home and we have a numerous amount of new businesses here that are using water.
Where are these new businesses? Never mind. Um.
There's a slight increase. It's not.
Yeah, because I, I'm thinking we losing people and stuff like that, so. High, high water bills are not.
There's not a lot of people at home.
No, I'm, I'm really partial to high water bills, you know, so, um, so my, uh, question, I guess, is that this is nothing that's going to be happening in the next year or two.
We'll see an increase in twenty twenty-four.
Okay, well, that's.
That's next year's budget.
All right, so also, um, how does what we went through with, uh, is it Highland Park?
Yep.
How does that impact this?
Highland Park and Gleva have, as far as I'm concerned, as far as I know, they've come to an understanding.
Okay, so we're not paying anymore for everybody.
The judge is, Highland Park and Gleva working that out.
Okay, so it's not, it has no impact on us at all, right?
I mean, it has impact on all eighty-eight users. It's just, I mean, we're all part of Gleva, so whatever is shared across the board. There's no picket shoot.
Is there a formula by which each city is charged?
Yes, and, and, um, it's a very detailed law formula. I could share it with you.
But I would never understand it, huh? I want to be shared. I want you to share.
Share that.
I want you to share.
You want me to share with you?
Yeah, I want you to share. Yeah, yeah.
I will be getting, I will be getting it in January and February and I will share with Congress and shows you the city's water rate increase that I share with the treasurer and family ran. I'll send it out.
And the formula that, that, by which they decide how much water we use. Because you know, we've had a long history of people saying, I only use two units and they charged me seven hundred and fifty dollars.
This is true. We're working on that.
But let me tell you, what Gleva gives us is minus what I give us as nature. What I give as a city in water rates. Based on projects safety of what we need to run, to operate, to pay my people and to build infrastructure. So that's where the biggest increase comes from. It comes from, actually comes from ourself. Based on what we're doing in the city.
So you're the ones the villagers should chase with the forks?
This is right.
But what you see is when you come out, you see infrastructure work and you see your money going back into the city.
Okay, all right. Did you practice that?
No, good.
Any other questions, Councilwoman?
No.
Happy Navy, happy teachers. I go through this over and over.
Any other questions for Mr. Bibbins? Hearing done. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Eyes have a motion carries, please. Item G, please.
Is to approve a memo of understanding between the International Association of Firefighters Union and the city of Inster regarding promotions of sergeants until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Some move, Mr. Chair.
Second. For the clarification, you said until December twenty-first, twenty twenty-two? To twenty twenty-two? Until?
It's the thirty-first. That's what he said, didn't he? That's what I understood.
Twenty-two.
To the end of the year.
That's correct, to the end of this year.
To the end of this year?
Is it gonna take action now?
And then after that, it won't exist?
It goes back for.
It'll go back to?
Correct, the contract, the C V A.
Okay, so it's just a term and then they'll do what they need to do and then they go back to the C V A. All right then. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Eyes have a motion carries. Brings us to public participation. Please approach the podium. If your name is called, please state your name for the record and you have three minutes to speak to this body and the general public. Marla, Jay Edwards, Ruler, please.
Three minutes. Good morning, all good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Um, members, um, I just want to approach you all and tell you absolutely outstanding job. I appreciate you all. Um, also want to offer you a thank you for every single. Um, also wanna offer you a thank you for every single person and every single resident. Um, the election went absolutely well. Back in another six years, we did ninety-seven point five percent of the vote. Over thirty-one thousand votes went in as a direct result of your participation. And again, puts me back in the seat for us to do what we need to do when it comes to educational opportunities for our citizens. And I am grateful and honored to be in that position, so again, thank you.
Awesome, congratulations, keep up the good work. Alright, President Henderson? Mr. President? You the president of the commission, the beautification commission, come on. You the president of the beautification commission, so hey, I just called us, I said, you wanna call Mr. Chairman?
No, no, you just, just say this, uh.
You tell me.
Just the man that love this city.
There you go, alright, the man that love this city, you got three minutes.
I'm my family doing it.
Good, good sir.
I wanna talk something about our Inxter Goodfellow Organization.
Alright.
We wanna thank you again, you know, for those who came to our pancake breakfast. Okay, and now, uh, we coming to the closing of what we wanna do for our children. Uh, we gonna have a pa, a paper sale gonna be December the second. We were able to get, uh, Free Press News and all that, they, they not doing that, they not doing it anymore. So, uh, with the, uh, this Denise Champion, she gonna help us along, we gonna have some publication. It's gonna be in booklet, booklet form, and we gonna be out on the street December the second. And, uh, so, uh, but anyone else wanna help us, uh, you know, sell those, uh, booklet papers and all that to raise money for our kids, you know, uh, uh, we, we appreciate that. And we want the fire department, uh, okay? Police department to help us along with that. And, uh, and we, uh, we, I, we doing much better this year of, uh, getting the funds for our children. And, um, uh, so December the second, we gonna be out there, and I, I hope the weather be a little decent, you know? Normally be cold, but anyway, thank you for everything. And, uh, that's about all. Man, you always throw me for a loop when you give me these titles. Thank you for everything.
Oh, we appreciate your love, man, and keep up the good work.
Alright.
Do you have a time, um, for that, that you guys will be out there, what time?
Well, we gonna get started around eight o'clock.
AM?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Right, yeah, no, no.
And I'm assuming you'll be at the Four Corners or Michigan Avenue, where you gonna be?
The major road intersection, right.
All through the major thoroughfares, okay. Eight until?
Uh, about four thirty, five o'clock.
Eight until dusk, okay, sound good.
And, uh, yeah, you can come up to the rec, that's where we gonna be having our, you know, our gathering to, and, uh, and the papers and all that, you know? If you wanna come up there, you know, and get, and, uh, and, uh, hey, oh yeah, we got a bucket out there.
At City Hall?
City Hall, right.
And we gonna put one over at the rec too, right?
Right, right, right there.
Hopefully live there.
You know, I told Bob, I said, we'll get a big, big fifty-five gallon, you know?
Okay.
And I might be a little too big. No, just a small one, but, okay. Thank you for everything.
Thank you very much. Alright, thank you, moving right along into city clerk?
Yes, um, I know there are questions about the election, we, Wayne County is still in canvas to certify the votes, so I'll be more prepared to present a report at our next meeting.
Alright, moving right along, and let me just say this, I mean, we definitely had a lot of things happening, a lot of moving parts, a lot of calls, a lot of participation, a lot of eyes, of course, we know that the lines have been drawn and all of that stuff, so I know that the pressure was tremendous. Um, through all, all of that, I had a chance to work with you, so good job so far as we're moving forward. Just hopefully the report comes out right, cause we, you know, of course, heard a lot of cuddle butt in between, but, you know, just overall, I just know that things aren't easy, you know? Uh, especially coming into position, especially being in a small community like ours. So just keep the work moving forward, that's the main thing. And, uh, let's focus on what we need to do, and if it's something that, you know, happened, we can fix it. Uh, we just have to continue to work together and then that's, that's the best approach, okay? Alright, then treasure, what you got over there, you, you got something for us? London, what you got on that phone over there, you smiling and keep, what you got? You wanna share with us? Alright, Baron Counselor, let's go ahead, Councilman Shaw, why don't you start us today?
You know, Mr. Chair, I just want to say, you know, my heart and my prayers and thoughts goes to Calhoun family for the loss of a great pioneer of the City of Inxter. It seemed like I just, I just saw her early this November. She came down to the luncheon and she had a little dog with her and what have you, and we tried to make sure that we accommodated her and, you know, fed her, you know, very well, so it's just like I just saw her, so it was very sad to hear of her passing. Uh, my heart prayer goes out to her family, uh, in the loss of, uh, I know she's gonna be greatly missed, greatly missed, greatly missed. And the other thing that I have, Mr. Chair, I just wanna thank the police chief, Mr. Chief Ratliff, and his, his staff and to the administration for some things that we had over on, uh, in, over on the street. Uh, very, very difficult situation over there. Uh, and I know that, you know, police work is hard work, uh, esp, and especially at a time like this where our women in blue, men in blue are going through the things that they are going through, uh, in this climate. So I just wanna thank, uh, the Inxter Police Department for their help on a difficult situation and thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor for your assistance as well.
Yes, sir.
And I just wanna say also, continue, if you see something, say something. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Alright, Councilman Williams?
I'd just like to, um, let's say this, uh, first of all, I think wrong. Done excellent job and a lot of the degree that we had and had it moved, and, and, and I, and, and I thank God, I, I met a new friend and wanted to work for the G, GSL, and she told me, she said, anytime you got trash and everything like that, you just give me, give me a call. And she, you know, and I, and I thought that was really gorgeous of her and how they moved the stuff out, out of my block. Um, other than that, I, I'd just like to say, I, 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 I see the, I see the clerk survive after this election. I, I just watched, I sit there and I watched all throughout the United States of this election and how they were, they were just gumming up everything, you know? And I thank God that Inxter came out with, with some blue ribbons, as I call, um, that didn't put us in the limelight. And we came out alright, so I just wanna congratulate you for a job well done. Uh, another thing, um, one, one thing, Mr. Mayor, that, uh, I wanna bring to your attention, I don't know who authorized it or whatever, but, that's my district and I, I love my district and I did not appreciate, uh, that day of the election that people drew their, uh, parked all them vehicles upon my basketball court. I thought that was really ridiculous when we had a, when we had a whole parking lot across the street. Down, and they normally park on the side, both sides of the collar coming down there, they did not have to park all them vehicles up there on our basketball court. So I wanna bring that to the attention of.
Okay.
Future that we can count on. With that and all, I also like to say that I'm gonna miss Jeri Calhoun, coach for kids every year. Then her coming out and other things that she's done and her, her, what they call it, parade and, and also she, she was always involved with the, uh, Summer Fest Committee, we're, we're gonna miss her, you know, she was a very active ninety-seven year old woman in this community. And God knows, um, we're gonna miss her, so I'm just, you know, keep our prayers unto a family, a son that's going through some things now, but he's gonna be alright, God's gonna walk with him and talk with him. Other than that, um, also, um, Jeri, um, Jesse Shelby lost her son. Okay, and, and I want you to send prayers for her also, while, while we doing that with, matter of fact, it's just getting to the place now, a lot of people leaving here. They ain't even taking time to say goodbye, you know, so, they go to show you, but here, here in Inxter, I, I, I want to continue to work try to do the best I can while I'm sitting in this seat, and when I get off this seat, I can still do even more. Okay, so I'm just hoping and praying that we can unite together in certain things that we wants to see here. I'm waiting, Mr. Mayor, on the master plan of the city.
Yep, we're getting there next.
I just wanna holler that out, I'm waiting on the master plan.
Yes, sir.
But once we get a master plan, then we know exactly where things should go. Bless you, that's all I can say, keep me in your prayers and I keep you in my prayers. Thank you.
Alright, Councilwoman Washington?
Um, I would like to echo the sentiments of my colleagues, um, and would like to send prayers and my condolences to the Calhoun family. She was always a really sweet lady and very supportive. Um, also, we had, I had a pretty eventful weekend, um, in the city. We had a multi, multiple amount of events happening for Thanksgiving. Um, there was a dinner with the mayor, uh, we have staff members there, um, it was really nice, had the three one three band, so it was a really nice event. Um, and then also I was able to deliver, um, to the senior apartments in my district along with DPS workers and members of the administration and the mayor as well. And then also, um, the Thanksgiving dinner was really epic, that was really fun, um, Event Cup and also Re-Rise, they, um, um, they actually helped the seniors and they, along with the Inxter Commissional Agent, they, um, served the seniors that day. Um, that was pretty funny, we had a lot of, uh, dan, a lot of people dancing and just enjoying this weekend. So, um, just wanted to say happy Thanksgiving to all, all of you, um, and to all the residents in the City of Inxter. Have a great holiday and that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Wiley?
Uh, yes, sir, just one thing, I would like to take this opportunity to extend my warmest wishes and my, um, continued good wishes for prosperity for one of our officers who retired and, or who resigned as of last Friday. Uh, ordinance officer Dawn Wall has been here for twenty-one years, twenty-one years, and she handed in her resignation uh, on the eighteenth, and I just wanna make sure that she has gone on to better, you know? Because, uh, she's been one of the people that whenever I've called her, she's always responded, always responded quickly and attempted to resolve the situation. So she's one person I'm going to miss, well, there's probably others, but they haven't gone yet. Anyway, she is going to be sorely missed and I just wish her the best, you know? Cause good people should have good things happen to them.
Yeah.
And that's all I have to say.
Yeah.
Oh, except have a happy holiday, that's, that's a good one.
Let's just say, just keep, keep Dawn in, in your prayers, she's, she's, she really believed, believed me, we had, I mean, her was kinda back and forth and talked along the way, you know, um, she's, uh, definitely going to be missed.
Well, that's another part of this historical, um, resources, one of our historical resources that's gone, I'm sure that.
Well, Gina stepped into the place, so Gina actually trained Dawn, so we good, we'll be alright. Gina Triplet, Gina Triplet is taking over in that position, so we'll be fine.
That's fine, I'm just speaking of Dawn now because I want to miss her.
Yeah, no doubt about that. I just heard that, yeah, the history was gone, that's not the case, it's still here, we have it, it's gonna be good and she's willing to work with us. She just couldn't continue to work in that capacity, um, as an ordinance officer, unfortunately.
So you're saying Dawn is going to continue to work with us?
Well, Dawn, let me say this, yeah, me and Dawn actually have a relationship where, you know, I'm gonna pick up the phone and call her for anything that we need. She's a resident of Inxter, so she's definitely gonna keep working with us.
I still wish her the best, whatever.
For sure, no doubt about that, alright, good. Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Hi, uh, thank you, I just want to, uh, offer my condolences to, uh, Ms. Calhoun and her family. Um, also too, I'd like to thank the DPS department for cleaning out that area with all those bushes. You guys have cleaned it off the one on John Daly. It was clean, it was clean, so I just wanna thank you for that. Um, also too, um, I do have, we, about maybe two months ago, I think we approved the, um, what's that, the old Jehovah Witnesses building? I think we approved the lady to have something going on there. Well, nothing has happened, the property looks really, really bad, it looked bad when it was approved. She's never, whoever is handling that has never been over there. Um, I rode down the other day, the window is back out again, cause I think we boarded it up, or somebody boarded it up, but it's a window open again. But nothing has ever been done since we approved that, for her to have that. Um, this mattress is still in there and this debris in there, so I just want somebody to just to check that, cause it makes the neighborhood looks bad.
No doubt about that, for sure. I don't know, Jane, do you know anything about this particular project? I know that, um, she, of course, had to come back to the administration to get administrative approval, is it, is she in the process or she's done?
She is. My understanding is still finishing up a few outstanding items, um, but I, I don't know if I've been by the property. I was told by someone, um, a couple weeks ago that there were, they saw activity there and they're cleaning it out. I, I can't speak to, you know, how.
Yeah.
The government would be able to offer more detail.
Okay.
On that type of progress.
Yeah, we'll definitely follow up with them, because I'm with Mayor Pro Tim, I mean, you know, as it relates to just the property itself and the outside of the property, nothing has necessarily been done at all, so I'm with you one hundred percent, I'll follow up with.
Alright, thank you, and, um, the last, just everyone have a safe holiday and see you in, in two weeks.
Alright.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, so those of you that wanna repay your respects to, uh, Mrs. Geraldine Calhoun, uh, Granny Calhoun, her, um, viewing is gonna be on December the second, at Penn Funeral Home, and then on the third at, uh, Pastor Hearns Church, what's the name of Pastor Hearns Church over there?
Christian Faith.
Christian Faith Ministries over in Garden City, where she was a devout member, she'd been there for years over there, um, as a member, so we'll be there. And then, of course, from this body, I'll be asking for all of you, we'll be presenting a proclamation resolution, um, for you all to sign, um, as it relates to, you know, her work in the City of Inxter, which is definitely appropriate. Um, as it relates to the holidays, got a couple of things happening tomorrow, we'll be giving away turkeys at the Inxter Recreation Complex at three thirty. Um, if you can't get in and you're homebound, if you can't get to us, we wanna make sure that we deliver a turkey, uh, to you. Um, you can call three one three nine four two zero zero seven eight. The number again is three one three nine four two zero zero seven eight, that'll be my direct line, my direct ring, so I can make sure that I direct those, uh, to you. We asking that you call before twelve noon tomorrow, no calls at three thirty, we'll be out giving away the turkeys. So, um, we're asking that people, you pull up to the recreation complex, those of you can come into the complex itself, we'll be in the gymnasium, come inside. Those of you can't get out your car, we'll have some people outside to help you. Um, Inxter residents only, unfortunately, because of the shortage in turkey, um, and it's been all over the news as it relates to just the shortage in turkey, we only have so many to give, so we asking that only if you need turkeys. You know, I've seen people at different turkey giveaways, I done been through all weekend, like Councilwoman Washington said, we had, we had a full eventful weekend in the city in the whole week, and, um, the sheriff was just here, I, I'm sorry, the, uh, county executive was just here day before yesterday giving away turkeys. So we ask if you got a turkey already, don't, don't come and get another turkey unless you really, unless you really need it, and you know who you are. Um, as it relates to Christmas coming fast, I'm happy to hear Inxter Goodfellas are doing well. I wanna know what that number is, cause we wanna make sure we hit our goals as it relates to how much you have. We wanna make sure everybody know, because that's part of what we should be doing as a community. Goodfellas Foundation has been around for years just for that, we wanna make sure that Inxter is, is hitting our targets. Following that, we're doing Shop With The Cop. If you wanna make any donations as it relates to Shop With The Cop to help out, um, people within our community, the police department's been doing it for a number of years, Officer Annika is in charge of it, and her number is three one three four zero zero six one one six, three one three four zero zero six one one six. They're still looking for donations, cause what they do is they give the kids a hundred dollar gift card to shop, and then they get a parent a hundred dollar gift card to shop. So we wanna make sure, if you wanna adopt a family, you can be able to do that, so for two hundred dollars, or, you know, a family size, however, you can work with Officer Annika to, to do that. So, um, just like my, 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 my colleagues and counselors said, happy Thanksgiving to everyone, we know that this is the season for giving. Um, just pay it forward, you know, anything that you do, just try to pay it forward. So thank you all, unless we have anything else, if all minds are clear, calling for adjournment? anything else, if all minds are clear, calling for adjournment? It's been moved to support it, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that want to say nay can stay. All right.